The time now to be here has been, uh, well, that one, I don't think he's been a good, I'm talking for me. We have like, oh, what's this? But, uh, now we're here to, so here we sit, fire.
You know, and with many lions that have been here with masterful, one, which would make a million dollars.
However, they're pretty much all of our part.
They're already, I hope, I hope, I hope Robin says it's illegal to give them money, should be given money, then we can put a stop to it and just say.
And just tell them when they'll do it.
Okay, which.
What I want to do is just ask, um, I mean, have you got any, uh, next step that the board will speak in order.
Do any, mind them.
Just want to address the matter, and may I have got any questions about the morning.
Sounds good.
Can you hear me? One thing would be better if you help.
There's a mic right here on that table that will pick you up, you just stand there and tell it.
I'd like that in one of them.
Okay, how about now? All right, we've got most all of our elected officials here, constitutional officers, got a representative in our fire department back and back for 4H here. We've got, uh, we have these required by law to have this, uh, public hearing, and, um, public, of course, is welcome to attend to ask any questions about, will he actually, uh, put this online? Was it before yesterday, Carrie?
Yes.
Yesterday or before yesterday, so, you know.
Yes, yesterday, yesterday by now.
This is a proposed budget, this is not, you know, locked in, um, but, um, pretty well set up and planned a toy here and, and you can look over. And we'll ask any of our public officials or elected officials, you know, if you want to come up and, uh, and go over your budget, if you got any questions, concerns, uh, anything that you want to talk to us about. Commissioner, okay, we've got one, Robert Goff, he's actually at a meeting and, thank you, man, anyway, uh, he's not here today, but just, uh, kind of, uh, an informal meeting, not really a meeting, a hearing. So it's not like that we're not going to be, and your vote's going to be taken or anything, so, uh, if you've got any questions, and if you actually ask or explain to the commission, or if we got any questions, that's what we're here for, so. Carol Bradford, I think you've got something, you want to come up here? He had, uh, talked to me just a few minutes ago and, uh, addressed the commission. How y'all doing? Turn it over to you, Carol.
Okay, uh, I'm Carol Bradford, and I am the court administrator for the juvenile, uh, court judge in Dade County. Uh, the juvenile court judge is Stephen Ellis, and he is a, um, appointed judge for juvenile in the cases for our Walker-Chetuga and Dade circuit. I have a lot to report, but, um, I just wanted to tell you that last year in the juvenile court for the year 2022, we did approximately 121 cases, and that's cases, that's not hearings. Some of those cases constitute around five hearings a case, sometimes more or less, so I averaged that out, and that ends up being right around 600 hearings a year. This year, so far through January through May, uh, we have done, we have 58 cases, and, uh, figuring out what those hearings have been, we've had roughly 290 hearings for this year through May. So that's basically, yeah, and I think my budget is reducing, uh, by $8,000.
Any questions from the commission? Don, you got anything you want to add to that?
Anything that we can look at.
Okay, all right.
Here, fine, hers.
Anyone else that want to come up, got any issues or any, anything? Don't be bashful, like I said, this is, um, this is not actually a, a meeting, it's actually a public hearing, so we can, you know, come on, just tell us who you are.
Absolutely, my name's Rebecca Thomas, and I am serving as the interim county extension coordinator for Dade County because Sarah Dyer left on May the 19th, full-time, I'm the Chetuga County Extension Coordinator, and, uh, and I'm just serving this as an interim role. Uh, but I have, I'm very knowledgeable about, um, what's happening in Dade County, and especially the dynamic rock star that I have right here on my left, um, and y'all probably already know Ms. Laura. Uh, but the extension office in Dade County has a farm gate value of several million dollars, and our largest, uh, ag commodity here in Dade County is our poultry industry, and it's 10 million, 900 plus is the farm gate value for our poultry industry here. Beef is a little over seven, 5 million, 7.5 million, and those are direct numbers that goes into our farm, um, that, that are operated here, along with our ag services, um, that we, um, supply our homeowners, um, and then our farms as well. And then, uh, extension is threefold, it has three programs, agriculture, natural resources, family and consumer science, and our 4H youth development program are run from our extension offices. Um, and I'm going to let Laura Cunningham, she is our 4H educator and runs that here in Dade County, she's done a phenomenal job, I walked in on her just a few moments ago, and she had, the whole ag building was full of young people, uh, which was a delight for me, they were having fun, lots of music, but they've learned so much over this past year, I'll let her give you an update of what's going on.
Was it cool in the building?
It was cool in the building, now she did have the door.
I tell you, we, we put, had to replace all the units in that building, they needed for several years, and it's really, because it's, it, and last summer it got terrible, and so it's, it's.
And I've been up there, I've actually done a, a canning program here, I don't know, probably six, I don't know how, when that was, last fall, I think, I came up, so I come up quite often from Chetuga, um, and did a home food preservation program, and we'll do some more of those, but again, I'm going to let, uh, Laura, she's the rock star here, I'll let her speak about 4H.
Well, I'm going to talk a little bit about our 4H program, um, I have been back almost, I don't know if this is, I'm, I think we're looking at two years, but I'm going to be coming up on three soon, um, but, um, I, we have expanded the 4H program drastically, she's right, I had, uh, the ag center full of kids, and our summer programs, we have a lot going on. Um, we're probably doing about three times the amount of programs as we were two or three years ago, um, so when you guys are looking at the budget, I just would love for you to keep that in mind, because we are going to keep increasing and keep increasing every meeting I ever hold for homeschoolers or something like that, there's a new family, every time, they're coming in, and I'm going to pull them all, I can promise you that we're going to pull them in, and we're going to expand all of our programs, and we're going to get it back to the way it was when my mom was here, so, that is, that is my goal.
And that's what we, you know, that's what we ask you here tonight for, I mean, that's like people here that's watching, that's not here now, the taxpayers know that what's up when we give you, that's where it's going.
Absolutely.
Whether you got a child, whether you got a child or not, that's where it's going, you know, it's just like our rec, our rec people back here, you know, we got a tremendous rec, uh, league going, we got our recreational fields down there now, and I still get people, you wouldn't believe the people, that just, uh, they just, you just can't stand it, because they're, some of their tax money's going down there, because, well, they've never had children, they don't have children plan, you know, but they still are kind of ill about it, you know, but still, they look at the, they're the future.
Here, then they, they got it, and.
That's right.
Dade County is very youth oriented, we pour a lot of money in our youth, and we need to continue to do that.
Well, and there's not a lot for them to do, that's what we were just talking about, especially that younger age, so I, I feel it's just so important, and I think it's awesome how much it's grown.
And one thing I just want to end with is that, um, when we do lose a position, or, or when someone leaves a position, like, uh, Ms. Dyer left, and it gives the university and the county as a, as partners together to look at the program and see what needs are there, what, uh, based on various things, the needs of the county, the population of the county, what's, the issues are happening, for them to look at that and see what positions are actually going to be, uh, needed, so there may be an opportunity for two agents, and that will be working, I'll be working with Laura and you all on, uh, trying to get that to happen, hopefully, very soon, and hopefully it'll be back to like when your mom was here, years ago.
Yeah, mom and dad.
So that was, uh, several years ago, but it was a two-agent county, we've been successful in Chetuga County by in, increasing the staff there, and then increasing the quality of life that we're offering for, um, for their, our clients and our youth and our adults, so we hope to do that here in Dade, so be in tune, in a couple of months, we hopefully will have those positions opened. Y'all have questions for us?
Have you looked at your budget?
We did, we are down just a little bit from that, but it is, there's some vacancies that will, or some of those will come back up once we get a person here, because right now, the commission does not pay me any travel, that actually comes from our district office, so they're covering that cost for me serving as interim, and some of those things will go back up once we have a permanent position here, we hope so. All right, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you, and I, you know, I do want to remind people, you know, all of our, uh, elected official, this is a proposed budget, so, you know, until we really get everything and see the revenue we got coming in, this could change, you know, and, uh, there's not, that's what it is, it's proposed, and I, I feel that, you know, looking at all the line items and all the point, I think it's going to be real close, but now, you know, there's not a commissioner up here, I don't feel this year at all that feels that we're going to vote for a millage rate increase, I'll tell you that right now, and, uh, so we, when we look at our, our revenues and we see and put everything together, that's when we're really going to get serious about this, and, uh, I don't feel, I don't feel that we'll have to, but I know, so maybe it's been here a long time, you remember when I came back and, not too many years ago, you know, we came back, we wanted 10% cut, or we wanted 5%, we wanted 20%, and we just said, we'll find it, you know, but we were going through some pretty hard times and, and then, but, um, that's all I wanted. And I always say this every year, this is, this is what it says, it's a proposed budget, you got, throw your 30 seconds. 30 seconds, all right, well, I'll keep the agriculture theme going here, my name's Stephen Bonico, uh, I am the soil conservation technician, um, representing the United States Department of Agriculture for the county, uh, it is through a cooperative agreement with Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Districts, um, and, uh, as well a local nonprofit, so a good portion of, uh, the funds in my budget actually come from other sources, which is terrific, um, and those are great partnerships, so, services that I provide to the county, uh, involve technical services, uh, working with UGA and the extension services to try to make sure that we are harmonizing, uh, the, the, the needs of the farmer based on the expertise, whether we're looking for grant funds through USDA programming to, uh, to help install infrastructure on farms, or, uh, you know, giving spray recommendations, which we quickly defer to our, our partners at UGA and their, uh, their knowledge, so, um, I will say in my seven years here, uh, you know, it's, it's been a terrific, terrific support from the county, uh, terrific partnerships with our, with our other partners, um, and, and just looking to continue that going forward, we've had growth as far as our participation with, uh, with farm bill programs, uh, we're coming up, uh, on another, uh, iteration of the farm bill, so for any, anybody with agricultural interests, they are currently seeking, uh, they are currently seeking comment on, um, what might go into this new farm bill and what priorities might be, um, I know that, uh, that our congressional delegation reached out to both UGA and ourselves this week asking for commentary, uh, on, on what we might like to see in the new farm bill, um, and those are services we bring, bring directly back home, I know we've had several people make comments like, well, why don't we just lower taxes, and, you know, everybody can build their own fence or do their own, and fact of the matter is, is I would probably be for that, but Congress has already spent the money, it's federal, it's not local, and so, uh, my position is kind of a local coach to help our citizenry better understand how to bring those dollars home on Georgia soil, um, do not tap, on Georgia soil, uh, because Congress will spend that money in California, Utah, wherever, the money's spent, we just got to bring it home, so, um, we've been successful at doing that here in Dade County, and, uh, look to continue to do that, and so a large portion of my job is to work with local landowners to try to coach them through the application process, the federal red tape, and, uh, and the consultation to, to make sure that we're bringing home everything that we can to make this the best place to live and farm. Okay, any questions for Stephen? All right, thank you, Stephen, appreciate you, John, I appreciate what you do.
I got a request, Ed.
Right now?
I kind of got a request, if.
All right, what you got?
See what you think, these are not in order, and we're, we're sitting here shifting through papers trying to find where they're at, so if they could, if we could kind of start with the front and go to the back, the ones that are here, that would help us, help me.
So you want, you want to, I mean, I've asked everyone that, that wanted to talk to us to come up, and there's nobody but the people that's talked so far that's come up, you know.
Okay.
That's what, yeah, I'm just going down, that's what I, I thought we'd, but, uh, you know, y'all welcome to come up, if you got, if you got a problem with your.
Excuse me?
Budget, if you feel that, you know, you did exactly right, announce the time, come up here and, plenty of time to talk to us, but to come up in the public and explain your budget, you know, I mean, if you want to, that's fine, if you, if you fine with it, that's fine too, you know, but I do want to say this, I know, you know, I think I speak for all of us here, and Dawn, and Becca, and all, but, you know, yeah, as, as public servants and, uh, elected officials, we got, we got a good group of people, and people, a lot of people don't realize that, you know, they, they, uh, they sit and they go to work and watch this clock news and read the newspaper, and they, you know, and they, they base their decision on that, and a lot, a lot of this, uh, people don't realize, you know, how much work y'all put in, and how much y'all really, you know, live within your means. When I first came here, you know, a few years ago, um, it was hard for me to really, it took me a year to really learn, you know, uh, exactly, it, I came from business going into this government, government's totally different, you know, you can run it kind of like a business, but you got, uh, you know, you got your tax base that you've got to, you know, you've got to live off of, your revenue, you can't go out and just pick up jobs and all, you know, if you get, you know, so you gotta really live by your budget, and I'll tell you what, all the way back from Phillips Street, um, back in those days, all the way up, uh, I've had some really good people that we've worked with here, and they were public servants, you know, and we appreciate it, and people, the people should appreciate, I mean, really, because we, I go to meetings all over state of Georgia, and you wouldn't believe, uh, some of the counties, we've got some counties in the state that are really in bad shape, I mean, they're really, and, and, and whether it's from mismanagement or just the revenue not coming in, we, you know, we're fortunate to have this interstate, a lot of people would give anything to have an interstate, how we run through their, their county, but you've got these counties in central Georgia, these old Putwood counties and Foreman counties, and, you know, they, they really, you know, there's some of them in really tough shape, I mean, hard shape, and, um, so, and the shape that we're in today, which, you know, we're, we're decent, we're actually in as good a shape as I can ever remember Dade County being in, as far as, you know, we're not a rich county by far, but the way we got here is, is all real, you know, I mean, uh, you know, put, you know, the people, you know, because especially our constitutional officers, they could give us a fit, they could, they could almost bankrupt our county, I mean, you know, we, I mean, they would be elected again, but, you know, they can actually challenge us on, on our budget, that, that we try to, you know, set for them, and if they didn't agree, especially in our sheriff, you know, there, there's some counties, um, I think Lamar and I, and I know we were always talking about the other day, we went to a meeting here a month or so ago, and, and they were mortal enemies, you had two of the commissioners sitting over here, and the sheriffs and deputies sitting on, they just, you could tell the tension, they just despise each other, and it's all over money, you know, and so we've got a job to do, y'all got a job to do, especially when it comes to money and finance, and, and we do the best job, we got a good team here, we do the best job we can, and I know y'all do too, and it shows, because, uh, '22 or '23, we, you know, we were the top, in the top two, top three of the state of Georgia, the lowest millage rate in the state of Georgia, and we also in the state, uh, we were the number two of the, uh, um, county that, uh, uses your tax money, uh, how was it worded?
Wisely.
Wisely, which, you know, it's not, you know, you think that in your life, but, but, you know, that's, that's something to say, that, that's not, I mean, there's a lot of counties, all the other counties, and we're up there on that top, and we'll, Dade County, you know, so that's, uh, that's, that's something to pat yourself on the back for, we appreciate it, um, Don, you got anything, I mean, you want to bring out, or, uh, I know y'all worked on it and worked on it, and, you know, and plugged numbers and. As far as the public's concerned, I mean, a lot of this is just introducing the directors and letting them. Yeah. Give a little talk about their budget. Paula, what have you got to say? Board of assessors. They're at the top.
Uh, my name is Paula Duval, I'm the chief appraiser for the Dade County Assessor's Office, uh, representing the Board of Assessors who makes the final decision on our budgets, and to date, we have agreed to, you know, accept the proposed budget that's presented by the county commission, um, our budget basically covers just your supplies, equipment, staff, and utilities, that's basically what makes up our budget, so we, you know, are fine with what was proposed by the county government, and, um, that's what we're going to do, we're just going to stick with it.
And then right now, you know, you do have a lot going on as far as that, so. I know you've had several people, uh, you know, that's been in and out of office and.
True.
Uh, and on the approvals went out, and, uh, we've had a lot of people, you know, come in our office and, you know, whatever, but.
Right.
Um, they've got to the 26th, so you're out.
File an appeal, that is correct.
File, file, and that's for this month, so.
That's correct.
You know, if you feel that your, your appraisal's not right, uh, that's what it's for, that's what, you know, but if you wait a day over that, I did that one year on one, and it don't matter, you got, you're, you're, you've got to come back next year, so.
And just a clarification, the appeal is on the value of your property, you cannot appeal that tax that you see on that assessment notice, um, that was required to be put on by the state of Georgia three or four years ago, it's just an estimation of what your tax bill could possibly be based on the value that is presented for that year, uh, but you cannot appeal taxes, you can only appeal what your property value is, so, you know, if you look at your assessment notice and, you know, you look around at other sales in your area, and you think, well, there's just no way I could get that for my house based on, you know, other evidence, come in and talk to us, you know, we want you to come in, we want to show you how we got your value, the information that we use, you know, it's all readily available for you, um, if you'll just come in and sit down and talk to us, we'll be glad to, be glad to show you everything you, and answer any questions you might have.
Yep, and they need to just, just call your office and pretty much, you know, I mean, and.
Yeah, we can talk on the phone, they can come in anytime, they don't need appointment, just come in and see.
And they do walk in, you know, they don't mind, you know, just tell me coming in, but, okay, y'all got any questions for Paula? Thank you, Paula. All right, who's next, Kevin? I, I know you've got something on your mind, this is our, he's our chief, uh, our second-in-command as far as our DA goes, and, uh, Kevin Ball, he is a Dade County in too, and so just, Kevin.
You know how I love speaking.
I know that, I know that, you're good, you, you've been that way all your life, I've known him since he was little, so go ahead, Kevin.
Well, I'm the chief ADA, I work for your elected district attorney, Clay Fuller, uh, he's currently in guard training, uh, he got reassigned to new base this week, so that's why I'm presenting this week for him, uh, our office covers four different counties for prosecution, that's Dade County, Walker, Catoosa, and Chetuga counties, uh, so each county pays its own percentage of the budget based on population as a whole, I mean, Dade County is about 10% of our overall budget, uh, all of our payroll and circuit paid expenses are through Catoosa County, because it's the largest county in our circuit, so our budget request this year does ask for a modest increase over last year, and that's three primary areas, um, after the budget was passed last year, uh, we discovered all of our employees, uh, we have circuit paid employees and state paid employees, but they're all on the state employee retirement system, so we found out after our budget was passed last year, there were some, uh, expenses added to the employer contribution for retirement costs, uh, so what we would have asked for last year is part of the increase for this year, uh, the other expenses are primarily related to personnel, uh, we follow the state payroll system for all of our employees, we treat our circuit employees similar to state employees, uh, we're asking for cost of living and step increases for our ADAs that was passed by the state already, uh, the only other portion of our budget that I really wanted to highlight is, is supplements for our assistant district attorneys, and the reason why we're asking for this, when we're at full staff, we have 16 attorneys in our office, right now, we have, we have six vacant positions, uh, four attorneys have left our office this year for other jobs and prosecution in other places, and each, each person has their own individual and various reasons for that, but the consistent reason why we can't keep people is we're not paying them the same that they can make in other areas, uh, this is something we've been working on the last couple of years to try to take baby steps to address, uh, we've tried to re, rework our budget this coming year, we've actually, uh, defunded one of our positions, and we're delaying hiring on another position to try to catch up to maintain the personnel that we have, uh, that's really, uh, you know, unfortunately, crime is not decreasing, our workload is increasing, we're trying to retain the staff that we have.
Okay. Any questions for Kevin?
How many people did you say y'all had?
On full staff for attorneys, uh, 16, when we're supposed to have what we're supposed to have, right now, we have six vacancies.
So you got 10.
We're working, I mean, for four counties, we're working close to 50% capacity with the same workload, so.
And out of the way, for me, y'all, you know, last, uh, you, you, last week or so, you, you stress that it's, uh, it's hard to recruit, you know, these attorneys to come into the county or.
It's, it's a small pool that are going to law school and graduating, it's that we can't go to Walmart and recruit our next assistant DA right now, that's just a, a fact, and I'm not going to point it selfishly, but one of the positions I'm having to cover is, I'm, I'm covering the resident duties for Dade County right now, in addition to my chief duties.
Yeah.
Because one of those vacancies, so.
Okay, so if you've got any young nephews or sons or daughters and nieces out there that's fixing to.
Got, you know.
Come out of law school, you know, come talk to, he's pretty persuasive, you know.
I know Mr. Johnson's in the same boat, he's having to cover little, little Dade County as well, so.
Exactly, yeah, it's just a, it's a hard.
Hard thing, yeah, but we appreciate what you do, though.
Thank you, we appreciate the board and their assistance.
Well, I'm just coming to piggyback off of what Mr. Ball was talking about, my name's Chad Johnson, I'm the circuit public defender for our circuit, uh, I'm in charge of our four-county circuit, which of course includes Dade County, but also Walker, Catoosa, and Chetuga. Um, we are also in the same boat, as Mr. Ball was saying, as far as staff, that seems to be a problem that's shared all over the state, especially in your more rural areas, um, uh, we're, uh, when fully staffed, have 11 attorneys, uh, and right now, we have two vacancies, and we've had two vacancies for as long as I've been in charge of the, the public defender office, so, um, so right now, it seems like the DA's office does have more vacancies than we do, but still, we are, uh, behind the eight ball, uh, as Mr. Ball said, uh, I am covering Dade. I am covering Dade County as of right now, coming, you know, in addition to all of the administrative duties that the state has me do, I have, I'm coming to Dade County to handle court on a, just in juvenile court here just a few days ago. And I'll be in court again coming up, so it's a good thing Dade County's such a nice place to be. So, I don't mind, I don't mind coming here. But it is a challenge when you've got so many holes to fill. And again, this is a statewide problem, this isn't just a problem here. But as Mr. Ball said, one of the issues is, you know, people want to, they want to be in the metropolitan areas. There are young people coming out of law school, and they're in their mid-twenty's, and, you know, they want to, they want to go to Atlanta and other metropolitan areas. And it's hard to get people to come to the rural part of the states. So, the only way to combat that is to try to, and of course, you know, your Fulton County, DeKalb County, they have the money to, to put into things, they've got a lot more revenues coming in, and so, it's easy for them to give six-figure salaries out the, out the gate. And of course, you know, we can't do that. But hopefully, what we lack in, in some things, we make up for in others, you know, quality of life and cost of living and that sort of thing. I would definitely much rather live in the circuit than in DeKalb County any day of the week, but that's without question. But anyway, and so, Mr. Ball, in, in our office, the DA's office in our office, are in the same boat as far as more money, vast, vast, vast majority of our budget is personnel. The actual overhead for, for other things is, is pretty minute, but it's, it's almost exclusively personnel. And so, that's, with that being said, though, I was able, the, the various county executives and county commissions did give us the ability to do a raise, a pretty good raise for our people last year, so I'm not really asking for much of an increase this year, because we got that, a very, a pretty generous raise for my staff last year. So, I'm not really asking for anything additional in the budget for this year. But as cost of living increases, as this gap widens between the rural areas and urban areas, you know, there may come a time, in the next budget cycle, I may say, hey, we're still behind, we've got to attract more people, better people, to come here to, to live in Dade County in the circuit, to plug all our holes. So, this year, it's more or less the same as it was last year. But, you know, there may come a time in the near future where, where I will be asking for something else. So, we'll, obviously, we'll take, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. Hopefully, revenues will be such that that's something that the county can do for us. But as of this year, we're trying to keep it, trying to keep it the same.
Any questions for the public defender?
No, I think you wanted to have talked about your office before, but we're really hoping to have, we're on schedule, have the old courthouse done by January, so...
Well, you know, the, the, the building that we're in, over across from the, the library and down from the sheriff's office, it's, it's starting to show its age, and, you know, we're, we're, source, we're very glad to be wherever the, the county can find this room. But it's, it's small, and, you know, the air conditioner will go out every so often, and, you know, that kind of thing. And I know I've talked with several of the commissioners, with Don, with Ted, with every folks about... One thing, we, we did talk about the old, the historic courthouse, but then there was also some discussion about the depot as well. And I think that would be a fantastic opportunity as well. So, I look forward to discussing with you all in the coming months and years about, you know, getting that, that project off the ground.
We didn't know we hadn't forgotten about it.
I appreciate that, thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Chief magistrate. Where's he at?
My name's Joel McCormick, I'm the chief magistrate. The magistrate's office can work with the variance from two thousand twenty-three to twenty-four. We've had an increase in Biden and books, I know that's affected a lot of the different offices, so the increase is there. We've had Charles Morgan for the past sixteen years, he's retired. We replaced him with H.A. McCag, Harvey McCag, and he, Mr. Morgan didn't take the full amount that he was supposed to. So, that's the reason that we have the variance in last year and this year's budget.
Yeah, Charles, Sheriff Morgan called me, you know, years ago, he said, you know, I just want to talk to you about my salary, you know, and it was during budget time, and I thought, well, come on, I said, I'll just come there and we'll talk, you know. I thought he was wanting a raise, and he was upset, he said, no, I don't want to take this much, I feel guilty, and he said, you know, I'm just not going to have it. And so, we had to kind of figure out a way of doing this, because, you know, he was getting, you know, so that's kind of person, Charles Morgan.
He didn't take what the state said that he should take.
And he, I mean, he, and he's one of those kind, that he was there when you needed him, he wasn't kind of...
He was always there.
He's always there, you know, so, and so...
But the colas and stuff that's happened, that the state requires, that we, we don't have any say on that, that just happens. And that happens with longevity and the stuff that, of people that's there. Thank you, any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you, Judge, I've always called you, joined my whole life, it's hard to remember, call you Judge.
Okay, Carrie, you got anything you want to talk to us about here? Come on up. Judge Carter, he's our probate judge.
So, I'm Carrie Carter, I'm the probate judge. Like Paula had said, my budget was based on the annualized amounts from the previous years. And then, kind of piggybacking on what everybody else has said, essentially, employees make up the bulk of the budget, and outside of that, utilities. In my office, we do have required training hours that, I have required training hours that I have to take. And of course, the cost of that has greatly increased. Fortunately, the last couple of years, they offered some online training, so I was able to take advantage of that. But this year, probably made up for it with the cost increase. I have three full-time employees, one part-time employee. One of my full-time employees will retire during this next budget cycle, and then I just have to make decisions about that. No, Lynn is my part-time, Phyllis Wallace.
That's right, I forgot about her again.
Will probably be retiring during the next budget cycle. Our expenses have increased, just the general cost of things increasing, the printing and binding, mail, everything. Cost of everything has gone up. But it does look like the amount of money we're receiving is beginning to increase. It was down during COVID, because they, tickets weren't coming in, and different things like that.
We couldn't have court either.
Right, well, we did actually continue to have court, we only missed a month or two of court. But firearm permit applications are down a little because of the constitutional carry, and so, that impacted us a little bit. We are beginning the process to be able to fingerprint individuals who apply for gun permits. And we thought that was going to come at a cost of about fifteen thousand dollars, just for the equipment and setup. But we were able to get with the vendor that the state has, and they provide all of the equipment and training and setup, and then they were actually going to pay us to do the fingerprinting. So, it's not going to be a huge revenue for the county, but it went from costing fifteen thousand to we might make a couple of thousand from doing it. But we'll be able to do any of the fingerprinting for the county, teachers, nurses, and things like that. So, we're really excited about... Yep, yep, the alcoholic beverage permits, all of that, we'll be able to provide that service. So, we're, we're happy about being able to do that, so... Three to four weeks, we finalized all of the paperwork.
All the paperwork's done, any stuff I can get?
Yep, we finalized all the paperwork this week, and got that too. So, it'll take them that long, they said, to build the machine and get it shipped to us, it'll come out of New Jersey.
Any questions for Judge Carter? I appreciate, I know you do, appreciate you working with us, too.
Tommy Bradford.
Tommy? Sheriff said you had about an hour and a half presentation, so cut it to about five minutes, okay? Now, this is, as you know, most people, if you look at, look this over, you know, the jail, and this is with any county, the jail and our sheriff department, they're the high-dollar items on any budget, so, you know, and, and again, I repeat myself just saying that we appreciate the sheriff and Joe Chambers back there, they, they've always come to the table with the right attitude, and, you know, and they really are, they're tight with their money, and that's, that's what it takes, so Tommy, go ahead and tell us how much you're going to cut your budgets, that's all I want to know.
Give it all back to you, no, I'm just kidding.
I like that.
Most of, I worked with Don, there were some areas that kind of went up a little bit, and then we were able to cut some areas, so we were trying to keep it to where minimum, if not under where we were at last year a little bit, except for employee stuff. That's, you know, we can't control that, that's the employees, but that's on there. So, we have probably, between the sheriff's office and the jail, right around the employees. So, that's the biggest part of our budget. And then, as far as gas, stuff like that, I think we cut a little on that, not a lot, though, because, I mean, it's unpredictable. So, vehicle maintenance, we cut quite a bit out of, probably cut about thirty thousand out of that.
Good thing that, though, we've got, we've still got some high-mileage cars on the road, but still, we've got later-molded stuff in there for a while, and we still had the Crown Vic a few years ago. Man, it was hitting select because you haven't maintained over cost, that's happened, you know.
So, we're in pretty decent shape, so I felt like, you know, cutting that vehicle maintenance part was pretty reasonable. Yeah, what was it?
Thirty-six plus, thirty-six nine hundred, thirty-seven.
So, we cut it quite a bit. There is some interstate work that's coming up that should, I mean, we charge on ten dollars for the used car per hour, so that usually brings in some money, I'm not sure, I think it just brought in, I mean, it's not a ton, but it helps offset some of that stuff, so I think the last check was maybe around five thousand, four thousand, maybe? Six, so, and then it's starting up again now, so there should be something else that'll be coming in probably after July, so... Any of that stuff, so, I'm going to let Chambers speak on the jail, because it's, you know, mental illness is kind of killing us in the jail, medical is kind of killing us in the jail, so that's mainly where his budget is, so, other than his employees, Chambers.
Joe, come on up here if you can, just kind of, you know, you kind of handle us together, you know, because you're, you know, I mean, you bring a man, and Joe puts him in jail, you know, he do what he wants on stuff.
He tries to get rid of him, but I don't have much success.
So, you know, as far as what's proposed for the jail's pretty decent. I did meet with Don, and, and like Tommy said, there was a few things that we dialed back some. You know, on a revenue end, one thing that's kind of hurting as far as the jail on the revenue end is inmate housing. Our revenue has been higher with Chautauqua County, but, you know, Chautauqua's closer to Floyd, and they're, they're, they're kind of on again, off again in their relationship, so with them being on, it hurts us in revenue. So, that's, that's, it's kind of been a little lower than I'd like for it to be, but...
Explain now to the people that don't know what we're talking, what you're talking about, as far as how we, you're basing it. We do house Chautauqua County, you know, we do, and so, just explain a little bit, you know, about...
So, Chautauqua County's in a situation where they're having to house out approximately, I would say fifty to sixty-five percent of their jail all the time, at the cost of thirty-five dollars per head, per day. You know, if we was closer to them, we'd be able to get more of that revenue. We got a great working relationship with them, they've had to evacuate twice this year. We took them, their whole jail in, or what they had on site at Chautauqua, so, you know, there is opportunity for, for revenue right there, we, we try to get in on it. And then, too, you know, they got a good sheriff, just like ours, and the agencies get along real well, you know, they're good, good folks.
And a good commissioner, I guess, he's a good, he pays his bills.
Yeah, originally got a, yeah, he pays his bills in on time, that hadn't always been the case. We've had to be the bank a few years, but that ain't the case now with this new commissioner that they got. But, you know, inflation hits everybody at home, and, and nobody thinks about it, but, you know, when you got a jail, and you're, you're, you're feeding the inmates, you're buying gasoline, you're buying propane, you're buying natural gas, of course, medical, you know, all that hits. So, what's hitting people's pockets is also hitting them, it's like hitting them twice when you're running a jail, unfortunately, you know. We just, we've got a house that, you know, bumps seventy to seventy, eighty folks all the time that we got to take care of. I seen it coming, and I, I really hate that we're, we're here. But mental health this year, this is the first budget year that I've seen mental health kick us as hard as it's, we've been kicked, and, and when my budget ends next month, we're going to be bumping about fifty thousand dollars cost just on mental health alone. Prior to all that, we've been able to juggle and, and worked with the district attorney, and the public defender, and the, the other courts on getting folks help different ways and manners instead of, you know, because we're not, we're not insane, you know, we don't have the resources here to take care of mental health.
We're not prepared.
But right now, we have one individual that is costing us three thousand dollars a month, that's just sitting. And every month that rolls around, he's costing the county three thousand dollars. The state don't have enough beds to take care of it, and, you know, the, the mental health system in Georgia's not as tuned or keen as it, as it is in some of the other states, and that turns me, you know, not being a psychiatrist, or psychologist, or any of that, that turns me into trying to figure out how to deal with this problem, ultimately. So, you know, maybe on a state level, they'll get something better going. And like I said, we're, a lot of the, the jails that I talked to out and about in different parts of the state, you know, they've already been, been smacked in the face with it, and, you know, we're typically about five years behind them. And our day got here this budget year, unfortunately. So, you know, you know, when you're, when you're looking at budget overall, you know, the public defender's office and the district attorney's office, you know, if they're not staffed properly, then, you know, your people out there paying taxes, in essence, they're paying for it twice. If your PD's office and your DA's office is, is running slow, that's going to be lag time and downtime, that's going to be longer than people is sitting in your jails with crime they can't be bonded out on. So, in essence, you know, taxpayers are paying twice for one problem that could, you know, if you could help the district attorney's office out to help him get more lawyers in there, then that's going to help clean out.
Process that person, get him out, get him in there.
You know, as a whole, and again, I talked to a lot of the other counties, you know, Dade County, I feel like the court system, we do a really good job as, as moving as quick in handling what we handle over here as compared to some of the other counties, and, you know, that's not a jail or sheriff's office, it's a combined effort of a lot of people that just has already spoke at this podium. But, you know, every day, citizen that runs up and down Highway eleven and glances over and sees a red brick building, and they really don't have any idea what goes on behind that, and that, in essence, what's being kept behind that, and what it takes to, to run it. As far as payroll in, we've talked the last budget year, and I... Um, as far as payroll in, um, we've talked, maybe the last budget year, and I said, I said the same thing this budget year when me and Don was talking about it, you know? Um, if I thought for a second paying my officers, uh, you know, twenty-five, thirty dollars an hour was the, was the grand slam answer, um, then, you know, I, I would say that, but, you know, now that we're, we're kinda in, in a place where, you know, pay is decent, it's not the highest, it's not the lowest, we're in the ballgame. Um, you know, we do have folks from other agencies coming over here, um, wanting to go to work. They may make a few cents less or a dollar less on the hour, but they do come over here to go to work, um, at our sheriff's office. And, you know, we try to, try to take care of them, it's about leadership, it's about taking care of your people. So, you know, right now, we're, we're sitting at, um, you know, we're, we're okay on the pay, you know, just, the only thing I'm asking is, you know, with, with inflation, everybody, my folks are, are feeding children and taking care of kids and everything, just keep us in the ballgame, you know, where we're at with the, the inches up instead of just stagnating, sitting still for several years. And then all of a sudden, we got this huge problem, we gotta pick them up because we can't keep nobody. So anybody have any questions?
What does it cost to house a person per day?
You talking about our, you know, it's so on, on average, i- if a person is healthy, not on any medications or we're not having to take scans or x-rays or anything like that, I'm gonna say that we're, just for a Dade County inmate, we can probably about twenty-six to twenty-eight dollars on a healthy individual. But, you know, taking consideration, um, we had one medical bill that was eighty-seven thousand dollars when we first got it. We paid out a little over thirty-four thousand, um, after we hassled through and got it beat down as far as Medicare rate and discounts and stuff and coding it. And I just, I just got another thirty-two thousand dollar medical bill two weeks ago, and we're in that process now and it. I mean, of course, we won't pay out the thirty-two, um, but, you know, we'll try to land it in the category of about, you know, eight. But, you know, it takes time. So, I mean, it's really, it's, it's, and then, uh, mental health, you know, mental health medication's not cheap. And, and we've got, we've had a couple this year that has just been off the charts monthly on what we've paid for them.
Yeah, what, what Joe, we, a lot of people out there thinking, it's watching us maybe, they, they say, well, you know, just don't, don't do it. We can't, we're required by federal law. Once, once they cross that line and we incarcerate a person, they step across, which the majority of the people seem like are, are indigent because they got, you know, if they're, you know, if they're not and they're millionaires or whatever, it doesn't, we still, they're, with their mom and daddies, I guess, you know, I've heard you say it before, once, once they cross that line.
Yeah.
And if they've got a cold or if they've got, if they're taking some off the wall drug, you know, you're talking about, it, it's, it's us, you know, it's your, you know, so, you know, we, we, you've got guidelines, you've gotta go by, we can go by, you know, so.
Hepatitis C, um, you know, that's expensive. If you get somebody even with Hep C or AIDS or even some insulin independent, you know, uh, that happens. We've got them in there now and, you know, that's what we're tasked with dealing with.
And that goes back to getting with, you know, you know, Brian House, it's a lot of years, you know, and, you know, as we get, you know, you come, Joe comes, hey, we got a guy in here, you know, it's costing us five thousand a month or whatever, you know, we get on the phone and we, and if that's not a violent offender, you know, get that judge, get that DA together and get him out on an ankle bracelet or whatever and get him back. And that, once that, once that happens, they're not ours anymore, you know?
And, and again, you know, I'll, I'll round, you know, the, the, your lower court judges, Judge McCormick, Judge Carter, the district attorney, um, you know, the spear court judges, everybody's been great to work with. It's, it's like you said, you know, to begin with, um, with the, with the, everybody working together, they, um, you really don't understand how that calculates in actual dollars until you get people like me standing here talking about it.
Yeah, that's right.
I got one more, and I don't, because I don't wanna assume this, and I don't know. If we house an inmate from another county, do they pay their medical bills?
Yes. So if they fall ill.
I didn't wanna assume that, I was hoping that.
I- if they fall ill, I mean, pretty much when I say housing, we're talking about lights, water, food, and that's about it. What, you know, um, if they've got a real big expense or they gotta go out to the hospital, we may have to run them, but they get an officer to replace ours and they take a hundred percent of the medical cost with them.
The only thing, you know, we've, we have run into, you know, issue on state prisoners, you know, as far as, right, I mean, you know, as far as what, the way we get paid now, and a lot of times, he touched on this too, you know, the state's pretty slow, you know, uh, finding a bed or a place for that person. And we've housed some state prisoners for, for a lengthy amount of time, you know? And I know with thirty-five, at one time, the state was not paying us the same, wouldn't, there was a difference in the, in what the state paid and what we could actually charge, I don't remember what.
So they did, there was a big dump out of the prison systems, and this has been probably, I guess, around twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. And then, um, the state got really good about picking up inmates within a two-week span of their sentence date. So, um, prior to all that, that somebody may sit in jail for, you know, two, three, four, five months waiting on a prison bed. And I, the exact dollar amount, I can't remember, because I'm, I'm thinking it's like twenty something.
It's almost ten dollars.
Twenty-seven dollars a head, but in, in a revenue end, on a budget, in a revenue end, it was on average anywhere from a hundred and six to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars just on the revenue end for the jail side that that cut out.
That's right.
Almost within a three-month span. I mean, it went from a hundred thousand dollar, over a hundred thousand dollar revenue to nothing within three months of them making that move, so. If the state will make it, kinda move on mental health and, and help every jail, because we're not exempt. Uh, we're just a little bit slower getting there on the mental health end, um, you know, that'll be our next big boost, I hope, one day.
Appreciate y'all.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate y'all getting in.
Thank you, Tom. Tommy's been about, about an hour, hour and a half with me and Ted in his, in Ted's office and just helping us understand. I mean, because we're having to ask and answer to the public, so I really appreciate Tommy's patience and helpfulness.
Anybody else? Come on up. We have the person that you don't wanna wake up and see you standing over, well, maybe you do wanna wake up.
I'm saying you don't wanna wake up.
Yeah, you wanna wake up, I take that back, yeah.
The family don't wanna wake up, they're standing.
This is our coroner, yeah, this is our coroner.
Hey, y'all, corner gross, like the corner. And thank you for the budget y'all have given us for this year, I really appreciate it. We were able to shave off a couple thousand dollars from previous year. Um, we are fully like up to date as far as technology goes from when I initially came in. Uh, we are fully online with all of our communication systems. And now, we just started, actually, within the last few months. Uh, we can complete death certificates now in just the click of our new documentation system that we're using, which is fantastic for us and it's great for probate and it's great for the families. We're really expediting that for them. Um, besides that, our budget is going towards personnel, is going towards equipment and supplies. And like everybody else has said, we're dealing with inflation, just like everybody else. Cost of body bag has almost doubled within the last year, um, which is insane. Um, but really, that's, anybody got any questions for me?
You know, and also, you know, yours, yours, just like on our criminal side of it, you can't predict, it's hard to predict your budget because you don't, death, you know, it, it happens, you know, we don't ever know from year to year, you know, and it's kinda hard, you know, I mean, to really be, but, but, you know, so far, we've been close, but still, you can't do it. And that's awful, bringing up even body bags, but, I mean, you know, people think, but that's, that's a big cost.
Mm-hmm, it is.
I mean, yeah, and I, I know the girls up front, when they, when UPS brings them in and they're stacked up and it says, body bags, you know, they, they call and say, get these out of here, you know, just get in. But it's, uh, it is, you know, we, we appreciate what you do and I'm glad you got everything up and, uh, you know, kinda modernized the whole office, you know, and especially the death certificate thing. So people that's never went through that before, you know, that wait period, it's just, uh, it can be, uh, not only that, you know, you're going through the grief and all, but just trying to get things, because you can't do anything till that death trip comes back. I mean, as far as probating or anything, the wheel, so we appreciate that.
Y'all have any questions?
Any questions?
Appreciate the compassion you treat our citizens with too, because I've
Thank you.
Got a good compliment here just a week or so ago from.
Well, thank you.
Well, you got some good deputies too, I mean.
I do, I have, I'm still running the office with myself and two deputies, Ansel Smith and Sandra McCag. Um, Sandra's currently out on medical leave, so Ansel and I are covering the county. Um, I'm running between a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty hours on call a week right now, and then Ansel's covering the rest. Uh, my boss at work's, my full-time job, I work at a hospital, she's really cool. If there's a death that happens in the county, um, she's letting me leave work to come take care of it, and then I can go back to work and finish my shift at the hospital. So she's been very flexible with me and we're able to keep coverage, so it's working out good. Thank you guys.
Thank y'all, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Stacey, if you don't get up. Nia?
I'm a little ashamed to get up here and say anything about my little budget, but, um, we haven't had anything happen in fifty-three eleven in an increase for how many years, Don, it's been forever ago, but it's, um, we're hoping it'll get better. I know everybody wants least cost of living, raising, I think that the county's gonna try to take care of us on that, so I don't really have any complaints on anything. Uh, federal grant DOT section fifty-three eleven was a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, uh, that's what they're proposing. Of course, um, county pays half of that, um, fifty thousand in DOT grant money, um, state grant DHS trips is a hundred and ten thousand, passenger fares was up to about, was five thousand, five hundred, um, rental, let's see, I'm getting ahead of myself, I guess. Four hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred for total expenditures, um, expenditures, and it looks like we're like, is that a hundred and eight thousand, one hundred gonna be down, Don, so that's a hundred and eight, or is that? Okay, normally, my budget, I've always just run just pretty much on key. Last two years, I've been in, a little bit in the hole with some of it, uh, it's because they haven't gone up in.
But right now, you're, you're, uh, as far as the equivalency of your pay, you know, to your driver, you know, it's been there. We, we try to do what we can do to them, but compared, you know, to Chautauqua, Chautauqua, whatever, they're pretty close, so aren't we on the ground? I mean, you know, I was just kinda, you know, come up to all those companies over there.
I've not asked for a raise since I've been here, but I've gotten raises for my drivers. Um, that's another here and there, I hope I'm retiring in March and let somebody else do it for a while. Um, rental on the senior citizens building was forty, four thousand, seven hundred dollars. Um, technical repairs and maintenance on vehicles was sixteen hundred dollars. Um, a hundred on telephone, travel, eight hundred, this is a senior center contracted, at which I also am over. Uh, I take care of the rental on the senior building and then have to go down, make sure things okay on that. Uh, general supplies materials is twelve hundred, water twenty-eight hundred, six thousand on electricity and twelve hundred on gasoline for the mill zone wheels. Uh, last year, um, go back to transportation, our fuel doubled. Uh, the vans, we're supposed to be, have gotten three new ones in twenty-one, did not get them, don't know if we're gonna get them this year. Of course, the mileage is going up and there again, you're gonna have wear and tear on the vans. We used to have to have a hundred thousand on it, it went up to a hundred and fifty, now they're up to two hundred thousand, uh, and they're all, they're exceeding that. We have two that are, that are the newer vans, um, that are gonna be reaching the two hundred thousand. It'll be time to order ten more new vans and, and I am a budget ahead. I'm in twenty, twenty-five, folks, y'all, so I'm having to already plan ahead for twenty, twenty-five, which will be coming up in July for me, for everybody else is in twenty, twenty-four, so it's hard to miss.
And the reason being is because of what it, our money.
Yeah, the way fifty-three eleven falls. Transit Alliance Group has helped quite a bit, we went from six dollars to eighteen dollars per client, that's gonna help us tremendously on being things behind. I don't know how it really falls in there that they do it. We got another, it'll fall in twenty, for twenty, twenty-four, we just got approved for a forty thousand dollar check, Don. Now, on the money that, the money that we just received, I signed off on the check, but that'll go into twenty, twenty-four budget, yeah. So it's, uh, that's helped us a little bit with, I think we're still staying on board pretty good. And everybody works hard, everybody does a great job, can't complain. I think, I think it needs to be, um, thought in the near future for that senior center, um, to put into the budget to have an on-hand person to keep that building up around the outside. Um, it looks pitiful right now, hedges need trimming, the grass on the ball fields look great, I know y'all gotta have them for that, I know y'all need them for up here, but, um, around the building, I got out there seeing them scrubbing down bird poop where you have to go into the, where they did automatic door, I had to scrub it off the benches, seniors sitting down, they're rubbing their hands to that, so I got there cleaning feces down off of that. I've asked for help.
What about the concrete? The, the, the guy on the back, you know, we, we.
That's not happened yet.
Yeah, because he's got, he's been turning recently, I mean, I need to call him.
I haven't seen anything on that, there was.
That's really gonna help the looks, so, you know, that's gonna help, and we'll try to, you know, put a little more effort down there.
That facial, when you got people coming in, renting, that kinda stuff, and, and, um, I know they'll get to me when they can, and I understand that. I've called and asked for help and stuff, but it's a, it's a work in progress, but it's, I'm very proud of the senior building, I love it down there. I love it, I love my job.
You might touch on this too, real quick, you know, you know, it's about, but it was, it was questioning the other day about the county. We had to cut these senior trips out or whatever, you know, but they had to explain that right there.
That is just for the month of June, they run short on funding.
When you say they, it was state.
It's not, nothing to do with our county, this is Rome, Georgia, this is, um, the funding for the tag Transit Alliance Group. Uh, they say she went, she pushed it a little bit of hard to get too many trips, and when they give you that much of extra money, I'm gonna push for as many trips as I can get. And Marcy there did too, and so, and I know the other counties went over too, but I, they called me a couple times and said I really, really was exceeding the trips. And, um, but then we'd get the approval to go ahead and do it, so they are having to cut back for the month of June. But I was assured by Barbara Hurst that she will make up that extra money that we're losing for the month of June out of some kind of funding that she has. So actually, we're not losing, they were upset about not getting to go on their trip.
Exactly, yeah.
And, and I understand that, but it, it is nothing to do with you all, it was something to do with just having, like everywhere else, the funding, money is short, it's just hard to come, come up with it, but, uh.
And I appreciate you pulling me out of the fire, because I, I had one senior who was livid.
Well, you know, the sad part of it is.
Get out their trip, I'm going, I don't know anything about that.
The sad part of it is, we talk to them two or three times a month and try to explain, but they, some of them have hearing problems, some of them choose just not to hear, and, uh, but we have, we've explained it several times about, and they start back in July. And in my opinion, we shouldn't do anything in July because it's gonna be so hot. And I have stressed that to Marcy, you know, we really need to think about having these seniors out in the hay if the vans broke down. You know, that's a different department than mine, I only just suggested.
Thank you, thank you, Nia, appreciate it. Stacey? What, come on up, Evan, come on. Evan's. Evan's there.
Really Rodney for laying.
We're, uh, uh, been working with Don on this, uh, it's economic development housing budget. And of course, as y'all know, we're kind of, um, the economic development authority or the industrial development authority contributes into the budget as well as the city of Trenton and the county. Uh, the good thing about it, we're down about nineteen thousand dollars a year, every year, from last year to this year, as far as the budget, which is good. The industrial development authority also just approved the budget from, for this coming year, and they are putting in an additional five thousand dollars into the county's budget for that. So there hadn't been an increase from the industrial development authority side in about four years, I think. So they went and had approved an additional five dollar, uh, five thousand dollars to come in. I've got a presentation, and I'm gonna be presenting the commission in the July meeting about, uh, the expansions that's going on in the industrial park and also the, uh, the new land. So there's gonna be, uh, you know, I'll, I'll have a pretty good presentation to be able to talk with you. Just in the last week, two weeks, and the county executive can tell you, we've had a lot of, a lot of inquiries. And we're working with, uh, private landowners, we're working with some of the land that we've got as far as under the industrial development authority. But there's been a lot of activity going on and, uh, and we've got a lot of construction going on.
There are large, um, hits on us, I mean, they're not just small investments, these are big. If we can just hit one or two of these people, I mean, you know, these groups, it's gonna be big for Dade County, man.
Absolutely, I mean, the, the, you know, we're still struggling as far as finding land to be able to do some of these things. We've had to not reply to RFIs on two or three occasions this for the last month. A lot of companies are wanting to jumpstart, and I'm assuming after a post-COVID area, uh, we're getting a lot of requests for, you know, a hundred thousand dollar, a hundred thousand square foot buildings with four, uh, uh, trailer bays, you know, to back your trailers up. And already, they're looking for that, already built spec buildings and things, and of course, we don't have that. Uh, but a lot of companies are asking for that, and we just, we can't respond to them because we, we got greenland, you know, greenfield land, but, uh, we don't have any, uh, spec buildings as of, as of right now. Uh, I will pat the industrial development authority board on, I think we got one of the best boards we've ever had, they're very engaged. I've talked to two of the representatives today, it's not just, they. I've talked to two of the representatives today, it's not just, they come and meet once a month, we're, I mean, they're really active, and of course, that's contributed to all of y'all, because y'all put them on the board, but, that's, that's all I got, Don's been great to work with, and, and what everybody has, you know, in the last year, so, y'all, any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, appreciate all you're doing, you did a good job. Stacy, you want to talk to us?
Sure. My name's Stacy Stevens, um, over the parking recreation, the code enforcement, and the building maintenance for Dade County, and I really wanted to go last, because a lot of people's talking about the growth in the county, how many more people are moving into the county, how many more buildings we're having, how many more, everything, and that affects me a lot, because the more people that move in that have children, that play in sports, that affects the park, the more buildings we bring in, the more people that come into this building, that affects the building maintenance, uh, last year, we had over two hundred and fifty inspections on new homes in Dade County, that brings a lot more in for the roads, that brings a lot more of everything for everybody's department, so, it's hard to budget for building maintenance, because when are these lights gonna go out? When is the air conditioner gonna go out? Hopefully, not this summer like it did last summer, but we never know, so we try to go by the numbers that we have, Don and Rebecca do a great job on going back and looking, all we can do is project what it's gonna be, because you cannot plan for that, uh, it's just like the kids down at the park, we average over two hundred and fifty each year in baseball, around two to two hundred and fifty in soccer, that elevates to probably fifty to a hundred tons of garbage a year, you don't ever know, and a lot of people don't realize, down there, those guys, there's two full times and two part times, there's twenty-one toilets and eight urinals at that park, just at that park, well, they have to clean them every day before you maintenance equipment, before you get started on mowing grass, it does not leave a lot of time, same with the two guys that I have in building maintenance with me, you never know, Ted, what was it last year, how long does air conditioners down in this building and that building down there?
For now, we got hit hard.
Three, probably two months.
A lot of, a lot of this here, that we got hit with last year, though, was a lot of our older units here, we had issues down there too, but, we're talking about units that have been here since this building was built, so, uh, and it all just kind of hit at one time, so we had, it hit.
Yeah, it hit pretty hard, and the, the employees of the county, the constitutional officers, everybody, were real good, of course, when it's ninety-five degrees and you have to wear a coat and a tie, it gets a little antsy in spots at times, but we bought portable air conditioners, we come in, we kept our offices as cool as possible, there's no way you guys, Don, me, nobody, we can't, we don't know what's gonna happen, so, you know, we'll just try to go by the budget the best that we can, you know, uh, it's like at the park, there's fifty to seventy-five people a day that just walk that walk track, so, how much garbage is that? You know, how many times do they go flush a toilet? You never know, you know, but a lot of the departments are that way, because the more Dade County grows, the more cost it's gonna put on the commission, on everybody, because we have to have more jobs, it takes people to maintain it, and I, I know you guys understand that, it's that you can't go out and hire ten people, because are there ten qualified people that want to come to work, you know, I know Joe's had problems in the past getting jailers, for one reason or another, because nobody wants the job, so it's very hard, and I appreciate you guys.
Okay.
Anybody got any questions?
Questions?
We appreciate, I always appreciate it when I walk into a restroom down there, especially with my kids or my wives with me, and they're clean.
That is a huge pet peeve of mine.
Yeah, yeah, and you can tell it, it's the whole parts, too.
We had, was it, Phillip, thirty-eight spots reserved for the yard sale this year, that took two days right there just to clean the garbage up, just from that, plus, guys working late on Fridays, on Saturdays, and on Sundays, just to keep the bathrooms clean, but we got more compliments on that than anything, and a lot of people will come in and give those vendors work, sell something, you know, buy something because they know the bathrooms are clean, but it makes money for us, as they stop in the stores, as they go to gas stations, it helps our tax dollars.
I saw y'all had several comments last night about that, the lots that are rented out, where the money goes to, I was wondering.
Goes right back into the general funds, yeah, yeah, all that money, uh, when, the money we make on concession down there, the money from the yard sale, if we do any tournaments, anything, it goes right back into the general funds, which cuts the budget to the park down.
Okay.
Anybody got any questions?
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Rodney Ross, he's here with the representative of the county.
Guess I don't get up there and look fast, but I'll get up. Hi, Rodney Ross, I'm the coordinator for the Chiefs Association here in the county, which consists of seven departments and about sixty to seventy guys that volunteer their time on a daily, nightly basis, and, uh, like everybody else, we're short on personnel, y'all can offer them money, we can't, so, that really makes it hard, we're trying to, I did ask the commission to give us an increase, hopefully, we can work something out, to give them a little something per call, I've been in it since for about forty-something years, I ain't gonna say how long, but, I just feel like y'all volunteer, and, uh, it's a new day and time, and people don't see it that way, and that hurts, but I do appreciate everything y'all do for us, and, uh, just remember, we are volunteers, so, if we don't get there the first time you call us, don't get on social media and bash us, we are, we're gonna get to you, but I do appreciate everybody's support, Sheriff's Department, they work good with us, County Commission, y'all got any questions for me?
Questions?
Well, y'all don't miss volunteering, it actually costs you to be a volunteer.
Yeah, it does, that's part of it, I mean, if you're gonna really volunteer, it's gonna cost.
Because it's your gas, that every time you leave your home, or wherever you're, wherever you're at, your gas, your wear and tear to go help people.
Yeah, and we can't predict what's gonna happen either, so.
Got a big calling.
Yeah, appreciate y'all.
All right, thank you. Anyone else want to talk to us tonight?
That's everybody.
Okay. How about our reporter back there, you, you got a solemn look on your face, you ain't got any comments, right? You're gonna put all yours in the paper, that's good, no problem, no problem, commissioners, you got anything you want to add to us tonight? I appreciate everybody being here, and I hate Robert, I may say that, I wish we could say something about him tonight, but I don't want to talk about him without, uh, not being here, but, uh, appreciate, I appreciate all y'all again for working with us and working with the county, you do a good job, and, um, Don, have you got anything you want to add? Rebecca?
No, I'd just like to say, um, thanks to the commissioners, they have been in the office, they've made phone calls, texted me over the last couple of months, asked lots of good questions, um, back this week, I mean, we, I've seen, I've had all of them contact me, um, so I appreciate the input, um, it's a busy time, we're, we're post-COVID, we're thankful for that, um, but COVID has definitely changed the work environment in the world, uh, we all know everything's up, we, we managed to get by last year okay, but we had to increase some things this year, general supplies overall, power, our power, when your rate goes up, there's not a lot you can do, we're slowly changing out all of our, um, light bulbs to LED, it hasn't happened in all the buildings yet, but it's brighter, it's more efficient, and so, we're, we're, we're getting there, uh, water meters winning, all new water meters winning this year, so they're running at a hundred percent capa, uh, effect, uh, efficiency, and therefore, water bills all went up, so, um, you know, it's just, it's, it is what it is, and, um, I appreciate that, but I appreciate Rebecca greatly, she has done a lot of the back scene work, and running, and doing, and this and that, and we text, and, so, I, I don't take that her for granted, she's not one to get into, to fighting with some of these people, I, I say, I'll lock horns with them if you'll just make all these notes, so, uh, she does, and I appreciate all the, everybody that's stopped by the office over the last couple of months, we, I think we got a good budget, we are in budget, we have a zero balance budget, now, what that means is, there's not much room for any error, or any emergencies, or any catastrophes, but if everything runs smooth the next twelve months, we should be where we are about this time, we are with our current budget, and, which is on the black, not the red, even though we have a red shirt sitting back there, I looked at her, and, uh, so, uh, you know, I, I think we're in good shape, and I appreciate, again, everything, and I appreciate Ted, everything you've done for us, and, uh, Ted's had a lot of meetings this year, but it's good, because when he goes to meetings, he typically brings back a check for fifty thousand, or a hundred and fifty thousand, or whatever, so, I like to send him to Atlanta, because he comes back with some money, and, uh, especially when you get it out of Atlanta or Washington, uh, the, we've, we are finding out, like a lot of local entities, cities and school boards, the ARPA funds are running out, the CARES Act funding is running out, and a lot of that stuff was to hire people, put people back to work, and now the government's pulled that money out, just like we knew it would happen, now, we anticipated that a little bit better than some places, um, so, we're not hurting as, we're not hemorrhaging as bad as some, but, um, you know, we're feeling the effects of it from the market standpoint, and so, we're, you know, everything's looking good, I, I feel pretty good about it, so, thank you.
Okay, Rebecca, I know you got something you want to say, I can tell, Rebecca, she's behind the scenes, she don't say a whole lot, but Betty, she gets a lot down, trust me, that was the best move we've made in a long time, bringing her on board, and we appreciate her, and everything she does for us, you know, ask Don, too, Don'll tell you right quick, she's, she's good, but, I appreciate her commissioner, you know, I really do, but, I appreciate all y'all being here tonight, I just, you know, and, uh, we'll, uh, we've got, and our next, uh, hearing is, uh, what time is that now?
Well, it's only public hearing, um, with the budget, unless there's some kind of major change in the next week, um, but, so, next week, one week from tonight, the fifteenth, I think it is, we'll have, um, a resolution prepared in consideration for your approval of the budget as prepared, but again, it's not in concrete yet, it's in concrete, but it hasn't set up yet, okay, so we can, we can make some adjustments if we need to.
And that meeting's, uh, what time?
Five o'clock right here.
Five o'clock, same thing. All right, if, uh, there's no further, we'll go ahead and we'll adjourn this public hearing, appreciate y'all again, but for being here, and we'll see, well, y'all don't have to come back now, next, unless you got some issues next, uh, week at five, but if you want to, you feel, you feel free to do that. Thank you so much.